The windmill is going to push to next court. Number fourteen. Number fourteen is going to push to the next court. Stephanie. Jim, will you pull yours down a little bit?
Yeah.
Will you pull yours down? They said it works better if it's.
Oh, oh, I got it.
Ready for you.
Good.
Good morning, everybody. It is nine a.m. on this Tuesday, November the 26th. Can y'all hear me okay? And I called to order the regularly scheduled meeting of the Burnett County Commissioners Court here on the second floor of 2024, by the way. I've always got to add the year in there. On the second floor of the historic courthouse here in Burnett. In doing so, I'd like to lead us today in the Lord's Prayer. Please join. Our Father.
Who art in heaven, hallowed be thy name. Thy kingdom come; thou wilt be done on earth as it is in heaven. Give us this day our daily bread, and forgive us our trespasses, as we forgive those that trespass against us. Lead us not in temptation, but deliver us from evil; for thine is the kingdom, the power, the glory forever and ever. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Honor the Texas flag. I pledge allegiance to the big Texas, one state under God, one indivisible.
Check.
All right, that would bring us to number three on the agenda. A couple of comments. If there are anybody here, a couple of comments, so please state your name for the record, and you have three minutes. Thank you.
Good morning. My name is Patty Cope, and Burnett County voter, taxpayer, and interested person. My comments today have to do with the Baker Tilly audit. On September 26th of 2023, it was announced to the court that the forensic audit company would work for the court. And then on February 23rd of 2024, we see an email which goes from James Oakley to Katie, and it's, there's no copies to anybody in the court on this. Says, Katie, I've decided to limit your inquiry to only the sheriff, and he should be asked about with a list of questions. So I just want to ask if the court directed the forensic audit company to do that? That's my one question there. And then also, the, when the district attorney was on the agenda to present his report on the Baker Tilly audit, the, I believe the judge said that he motioned to table based on legal advice. And I'd like to know, is the legal advice representing all of the court? Or the judge, or who? And why do we not have a written letter or notice about tabling it, and also why we don't have department updates? Or department updates on the agenda anymore? Because all the departments, I believe, report to the court. So how is the county conducting business without updates? Thank you.
Good morning. Alan Trevino, Burnett County resident. At the November the 12th Commissioners Meeting, I was astonished that Commissioner Dockery had to, while in public comment, describe to the court the success of the BOPAID event. When I stated in the October 8th Commissioners Court, department updates, that department updates and old business are no longer on the agenda, Judge Oakley quoted saying, as recommended legally, to not have that on there anymore. I spoke to County Attorney Arredondo, and he advised he did not give that advice. So who was the legal advice? Are you Commissioners okay with the court removing department updates and old business from the agenda? What it gives the appearances of silencing elected officials and department update, and department heads. The court is getting further and further away from transparency and moving in the wrong direction. At the same meeting on November the 12th, the day after Veterans Day, the national holiday we observe to thank our veterans, Judge Oakley in open court accused the wife of a Vietnam-disabled veteran of not paying taxes. It was uncalled for, it was unprofessional, and shameful. Ms. Cope, Judge Oakley does not speak for the, all these employees of Burnett County. I'm sorry that it happened, and I thank you as the wife of a disabled veteran for your sacrifices. This court owes a public apology to Ms. Cope.
Any other public comment? Hearing none? Unless there's any special requests, I'll go straight into the agenda.
Hear anything, or it's low? Check. Can you say something?
Test, one, two, three. Mine wasn't on.
Check, check.
And my battery's low. It looks like. The good news is this is recorded. That's the main thing. I'll speak loud enough that we can continue doing business here. Item four would be discussion or action regarding the appointment of Robbie Cheatham and Jodeen Lee to ESD 2. Commissioner Luther?
This is a reaffirmant of Robbie Cheatham and Jody Lee to the ESD Board Number Two. We appreciate their service, and they are asking for a second term. So I move for approval.
Second.
We have a motion second. Any questions, comments? All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Five, discussion or action, oh, discussion on the announcement of the TCEQ public meeting concerning the proposed air quality registration number 176835 by Asphalt Inc. on... Does he not get one? Does he not get one? Musical microphones. Okay, so this is on the public meeting by TCEQ on December the 10th at 7:00 p.m. at the Hill Country Fellowship Church located at 200 Houston Clinton Drive here in Burnett. This is also noted on the acknowledgement receipt, but I wanted to give it some extra attention because there's been a lot of public outcry about that. So I just wanted to make sure this is not an action item, but I wanted to make sure that we clearly showed this on the agenda that on December the 12th at 7:00 p.m. at the Hill Country Fellowship Church out here by the airport, that that meeting will be going on. So, any questions? I can't hear you.
You said, you said the 12th, and I think you meant the 10th.
Oh, I meant, I'm sorry. Definitely December the 10th at 7:00 p.m.
Do we need to post it? Who else going?
I'm planning on being there. We can post that as a public. I mean, let's give it to County Attorney. That's not something the county has purview on a future vote on. But let's give it to County Attorney on that and see if there's a need to post that as a public workshop. That's fine. Let's plan on that then. Sorry, I didn't see you sitting over there.
I found it was easier to be over here.
Okay, six, is discussion or action concerning the acceptance of a resignation letter from Justice of the Peace Precinct Four effective February the 7th, 2025, and the appointment of a committee to make a recommendation to Commissioners Court for that appointment. This is pursuant to Texas Local Government Code 87.041. That appointment would be effective February the 8th. So the code allows for the court to make that appointment. I think I applaud the service of Judge Benzal and her giving lots of notice so that we can plan for this. What I'd like to propose is a committee comprising of Commissioner Ford, Commissioner Dockery, and Commissioner Precinct Four, Joe Don Dockery, and Constable Missy Benzal, as well as Debbie Benzal to sit on that committee. Those, any interested parties will get, make sure the press gets out that they can send in a letter of inquiry. I wouldn't say it has to be a full-blown job application, but they can fill out a job application if they chose, if they choose. But they can express an interest and direct that to the H.R. Department. She's not here, but those will go to the H.R. Department. And so during, from now until, I'm just guessing, the end of December, and then the committee could make a recommendation to court on the first meeting in January. And we could make that appointment at that meeting. And that way, it would give whomever selected a month to get their, if they're having to leave, give notice where they are now, or, you know, get their affairs in order to take office on 12/01/2025. That's the plan I had in mind. Is there any thoughts or other ideas on that?
Are you open for public comment on this yet?
You can have your public comment.
As a taxpayer voter and interested person, could you consider the just, the other JPs on your committee and open it up to, of course, members of the public? Because generally, we vote on the JPs. So I just think it might be a good idea if they have to work together to have them on the committee just from the get-go.
Okay. Gentlemen, any?
Well, somebody from... Somebody from the Republican Club, maybe? Or do you not get political involved?
I wouldn't want to make that a partisan thing.
Okay, that makes sense.
But I think having the experience of Judge Benzal asked if she could serve on that committee.
Sure.
I want to respect that.
Absolutely.
And I think it's, the constable works very closely with the JP, so I think, Commissioner, I mean, Constable Benzal is a great selection, and obviously Commissioner Dockery on that, so.
If we wanted to add JP three to it, that'd be fine, because they work in the same building. That's fine.
That's fine. Anybody like to make a motion to that effect?
Or could we add one citizen to that?
You would need to name it today. I say you need to name it today. You would need...
Ms. Cope, didn't see so interested in it. I would move to put Ms. Cope on along with the...
Now, she doesn't live in that particular precinct.
You need to be in that precinct.
I think it'd be most appropriate if it was a citizen within that precinct.
Is there anybody here in Precinct Four that wouldn't want to be on that?
I would say that we could probably, since we're just taking the names up through the month of December, we could add somebody later, you know, during the month of July.
Yes, ma'am. I think it'd be a nice idea if all of the, if all of the JPs were allowed to be on that committee. Not just, not just two. We all do work together. It's not just that end, south end and north end. We all work together. So I, I think that we should probably all at least be afforded the option of being on that committee.
Okay, that's a valid request. So that would mean a committee based of all the JPs, the constable, and commissioner of Precinct Four.
And one citizen?
We just don't know who?
We could add that at a subsequent meeting, because the committee won't be evaluating applicants until after the month of December. To prep us for the meeting, or we will do the appointment, at least it would, my vision, to do the appointment in the first meeting in January, which that looks like that would be on January the 9th. Hello there.
Hello, Commissioners and Judge. I'm willing to serve, and I live in Precinct Four if you would prefer. If not, that's fine. I can help find someone later, but I'm willing to serve if you wish.
Now, that first meeting, Judge, it looks like it'd be January 14th.
I'm sorry?
The meeting in January would be January 14th.
I see that wrong. I got the second.
Is that not correct?
Oh, that, that is right. Yeah, Tuesday the 14th. I was looking at the wrong year. So we'd make that appointment on the 14th, and that would allow three weeks for the person selected to give notice wherever they're at, if they're an employer or whatnot.
When is the committee meeting? We've got a lot of dates. We're passing out there.
My thought was, was to accept inquiries, interested parties through the month of December, and then the committee could meet after those are all submitted, and then have a recommendation by the 14th of January. I think the committee amongst themselves would need to decide what date they could all get together, either by phone or by in person.
So you're taking applications for the position and also applications to serve on the committee all the way through the end of December?
No, there's no application to serve on the committee. There was a desire to add a citizen to that panel. That, no, I had one person offer their name up.
Right.
I'm waiting for a motion on who that could be, or that person could be named later.
So you, you made a determination here that it has to be, if the citizen's going to serve on this committee, that citizen, you said it should be somebody who lives in Precinct Four, but the JPs do have bench agreements, and they work in all precincts, so.
That's just, that's my idea, that I think that that's most appropriate. So.
I think, including all the JPs on it, it's fine with me. I have no problem with that one, two, three, four, five, six.
May we know the name of the person who volunteered?
I'm sorry, I'm not used to being real.
So, okay. Let's form a committee.
Let's do it.
Of the four JPs, Commissioner Dockery, Constable Benzo, and a citizen that we can appoint on December the 10th?
Or today, if you have one.
Let's see who else is interested.
Fine with me.
And I appreciate the one, and then that can be considered, and then we can see who else. And then, is that it? Is that all we talked about so far, countywide?
Mm-hmm.
I object to Mrs. Oakley being on that committee. I think it speaks of partisanship, and I object to that. Thank you.
I didn't see it coming, for what it's worth. It was a surprise.
I think on the 10th, we can pick up, find some citizens who are interested, but, and I think that would be a well-rounded committee.
Yeah, I'm, I'm made aware that our H.R. Director is a Precinct Four resident, Charlie Plard. I think that'd be an excellent.
I don't, I don't think it should be a county employee as the citizen that's under our purview. That would be my only thing. That's, doesn't, optics on that would not be very good.
That's fine. I figure the Switzerland position, but in H.R., whichever. So we can get, do this, and on the 10th, if there's a citizen identified, they can be added to the committee. I don't think that the committee's going to be hobbled if we're not able to find one.
Okay. That's my motion.
All right, so to be clear on the motion, you got it?
Four JPs, the Commissioner Four, Constable Four, and a citizen who will be appointed at a later date possibly.
Yes. Second.
Are you limiting it to one citizen? Is this a limit? Earlier, I thought you said people could send a letter of inquiry. So now you're limiting the motion to one citizen?
No, no, no.
Okay.
The letter of inquiry is for an applicant to be on the... Consider to serve as a JP.
Okay, so you're having one member of the public, and all the rest of the members are government employees. Is that right?
Maybe we should see how many interested people we get.
Thank you.
And finalize it on the 10th.
All right, we have a motion second.
Second.
All right, all in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
On that, just not to do with the committee, but it's... So starting today or start, how do people know that they can apply for this position?
Well, we're gonna, the press is gonna put it out there. We'll put it out on social media, put it on the county website, you know. The word will get out. It will be posted, just like a position, any position in the county.
Okay, that's what I was, so, okay.
All right. Done with that. Seven, is discussion and a possible action concerning the recent acquisition of 4.33 acres and related improvements known as the Old Elementary School. So it's been quite a while back, several months, that the court, an executive session, we talked about this, and came out and voted and authorized me to sign, take, do all steps necessary for the acquisition of the property. So this is the property where the agrileaf is now, which we, up until a few days ago, had just a free lease to use that and some other classrooms. But now, we went into an agreement where we did purchase the property for $570,000, and I believe $300, $300 and some change, I believe. Which I'm very confident in that pricing. And because of all the buildings, it's a whole city block. And so what we're doing now is changing the locks over to the cava system. And we will be getting a cleaner diagram of what all the footprint of the building rooms look like. One of the things that's going to be nice about having this is some of the rooms can be used for some required storage of documents and whatnot. They are currently out at the Sheriff's Office Old Jail portion, and that's just getting more and more cumbersome to get into, and it's limited on space. And I think it's going to be better just to have these available here, and I know there's some nonprofits that have a couple of the rooms used, but we'll need to go through and clean up the MOUs that the entities had in place with the school system and reflect it back to our ownership. And we'll start to look at master planning, what are opportunities there are. And as we grow, we're always needing new office spaces, and needed to move people around and do things, and this is a great opportunity to do that. So is there any questions or anything about that acquisition? Okay, well, I'll just submit this little diagram for that, but we will be getting more and more into that. Eight, discussion or action regarding the results of the October 19th, 2024 HHW Household Hazardous Waste Event and setting the April 20, 2025 date for the annual BOPAID event. Mr. Dockery?
I have submitted the summary sheet to the clerk to be recorded into the minutes. And the main thing we need to do is look at the calendar for April and try to figure out when that date could be for the BOPAID event. This will be the scaled-back version of the HHW, where we will not be taking chemicals, but we'll still take batteries, oil, paint, antifreeze tires, electronics, and loose metals. Third weekend in April is Easter, so that's probably out. And so it looks like it's either going to be April 12th or April 26th.
Are we going to be at the mercy of any of the vendors that we?
Well, that's the reason we're doing this so far in advance, is I'm trying to do that so that I can get in contact with the chemical vendor. I don't say chemical vendor, the vendor that takes the paint. And so that, make sure that they have availability. And so if you want to select those two dates, then I can go to them and make sure that they don't have a conflict and...
And that's the 5th and the 26th?
No, the 12th and the 26th.
12th and 26th.
So the 12th is the Bluebonnet Festival. I'm not sure Burnett's a great place to do.
Ooh.
Okay. Well, that's the 26th or the 5th. Let's see what's going on the 5th. Yeah, I don't, I don't have anything, I don't have any conflict for the 5th. The 5th or the 26th then would be the two dates.
Well, we could just tentatively set the 5th and the 26th.
Check those dates. Yeah, I think so.
And get with the vendor, and we'll fine-tune that as we get a little closer.
Okay, it will appear on our agenda again.
Okay. That's marked as an action item. Do you, I'm not sure it really needs a votes, and we're still trying to hone down the date, so.
Yeah, like I say, it'll be back as a, as a true action at some point when we confirm with the vendor their availability.
Okay. Number nine, discussion or action regarding the Texas Association of Counties Cybersecurity Course Enrollment Form for Counties' Trains Program. I don't believe that Jackie's available to speak to that. You have something?
This is just our annual renewal with Texas Association of Counties, and this is required for all of our grant funding.
Okay.
The renewal lists, the H.R. Director is the administrator, Jackie is the IT contact, and the county auditor is the assistant administrator. It's the same as last year.
Okay. All right. Not to be a motion to...
Is there a cost associated with that? I don't remember. There is $3600.
Yeah, I believe that's correct. We did budget for it.
I'd move for approval of Texas Association of Counties Cybersecurity Course Enrollment.
Second.
Okay, question? All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Number 10, discussion or action concerning the acceptance of the quarterly investment report for Q4 FY24. That'd be July through September.
Good morning.
Good morning, Madam Treasurer.
Just to wrap up FY24, a few numbers for you. Our total interest earned for that quarter ending September 30th is, excuse me, $835,411.61. We ended with a cash and investments balance of $62,798,253.91. Interest earnings for that quarter averaged about 5.3%. Unfortunately, Feds met. Those have gone down a little bit. But ending 9/30, we were sitting pretty good at our good average investment rate. That's invest, the quarterly investment, and then I also have October beginning FY25, if y'all are ready for that. I think it's another agenda item. I think it's separate. It is, okay.
Gentlemen, any questions, comments, or motions?
Move for acceptance of the quarterly investment report.
Second. Motion second, all in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Item 11, discussion or action... Item 11, discussion or action regarding the approval of the Treasurer's Monthly Report for October 24.
Okay, so beginning FY25, um, we started with receiving, uh, $3,915,762.38. Our interest earnings for October were $261,865.9. We dispersed $4,567,359.5, leaving us with a month-ending cash and investments balance We received donations to vet rides for $4,521.
Questions, comments, or motions?
Move for acceptance of the Treasurer's Monthly Report, October 24.
Second.
We have a motion and second. All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you.
Twelve, discussion or action concerning the replat of lots 24, 26, 27, and 28 within Oak Ridge North, to be known as lots 24A and 27A, so this would be taking four lots and making them into two larger lots.
That's right, Judge, it's pretty si, um, yeah. Lower end, Denny. Move for approval?
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and second. Is there any questions or comments? I know, Mr. Lovelace, you were here for, you were good, okay? All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Thirteen, discussion or action concerning a donation deed for .0103 acres, or around about 450 square feet, more or less, out of the Charles Cavanaugh Survey, Abstract Number 171, from Brian Robinson on behalf of Quest Trust Company, located at the intersection of County Road 200 and 200A for the improvement of public safety and right-of-way enhancements.
Mr. Robinson is donating to the county that corner, uh, like it says, 200 and 200A, so we're gonna be able to clear that off and make line of sight, uh, much more improved. Move for approval?
Second.
We have a motion and second. All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Um, I've been advised that, uh, 14 is not ready today. It will reappear on our agenda on the 14th of December, so no action on item 14. Fifteen, discussion or action concerning the preliminary plat approval for the ranch on LBJ Warehouse Subdivision, a private subdivision consisting of 46 lots on 14.18 acres located off Paris Lane. That's awful pretty, mister.
Judge, Commissioners, what this is, the ranch on Lake LBJ is located off over here. Those are on-water lots with not a lot of parking, not a lot of storage. The developer has created this section where people can buy a lot.
Keep their boats and...
You got it.
Is it limited, I'm just curious, is it limited to the property owners, or is it open to?
So far, it has.
So far, yeah, it is.
It's not restricted that way.
Yeah, well, it makes a ton of sense.
Yes.
Yeah, there's no place to park their, your facilities.
Need to follow LCR guidelines and...
Is there water available or?
There is.
Yes.
There's water and sewer.
There's a WC and ID that serves the whole subdivision.
But these aren't designed to be living units, so are they?
No, they're not supposed to be.
Nope.
Storage.
So when you say not supposed to be, the POA would regulate that? The, yes, the, the, uh, the claret would. Okay.
I'd move for approval.
Second.
We have a motion and second. Any other questions? And is this the, uh?
Preliminary.
Preliminary, so no signing, okay, sounds good.
Thank you, Don.
Thank you.
Judge, we didn't vote in motion second.
Pardon me?
In a motion second, we didn't vote.
It's, uh...
I made the motion for approval.
Okay, I'm seeking signature. We have a motion and second. All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries, thank you. Colleen, we don't need to go into executive session for this item, do we?
I believe we do, Your Honor, yes.
We do?
Yes, we do. It'll be good.
All right. Let me make sure there's not something. Out of respect to the crowd, I wanna hold on that till the end of the agenda and go through any other business that we have here. So, that would take us to item 19, which would be acknowledgment of receipt, um, and that's acceptance of reports of county officials as per local government code. Uh, we have the county auditor, uh, reports that you wanted to read, which ones those were?
I guess we had additional reports coming in, we've got one, uh, we've got the reports from the county auditor.
There's nothing to read here.
I, I'm sorry, we've got reports from the county auditor, ag extension, county attorney, county clerk, district clerk, elections, environmental services, JP 1, 2, 3, and 4, the sheriff's office, libraries, tax assessor, and that is it.
Okay, so in addition to that, we have item B, which is the MIS summary, which is the Government Trap Report. We have TCQ notice, um, groundwater monitoring, and also TXG 67, 6.40. E would be FY23 Certificate of Achievement for Excellence in Financial Reporting to Burnet County for its Annual Comprehensive Financial Report for the fiscal year ended September 30th, 2023. So another, another caper to hang on the wall. All right. Not an action item on item 19. Item 20 would be discuss and take action regarding contracts, agreements, or grants to be approved and/or ratified. A would be approval and the approval and the approval to sign. At a later date, the FY24 Amendment Number Two for the FY24 MOU with Burnet County, Burnet County Sheriff's Office, and Bluebonnet Trails Community Services for additional time to August 31st of '25, and an additional $80,000 for crisis diversion program. B would be approval and signing of FY25 interlocal agreement with Burnet County and Bluebonnet Trails Community Services, uh, for Burnet County Jail's court-ordered mental health assessment for $30 per assessment, the interlocal period being, uh, October 1st of '24 to August 31st of '25. C, uh, approval for the judge to sign the Motoroto Final Project Acceptance Certificate for the Heart of Texas Auto Theft Task Force In-Car and Body-Worn Camera Systems Project. D would be amendment to have the total amount paid to Ingram Eat's catering increase from $6,600 to an amount not to exceed $8,250 for the catering agreement approved in Commissioner's Court on September 10th, 2024, and that before the Employee Appreciation Dinner, I suspect. And E would be a service agreement with Bode Barker for his DJ services for the annual employee appreciation dinner. Guess you get the night off.
I do.
Uh, F, uh, sign a replacement, uh, uh, the resolution originally approved and signed on the 24th of September 24, authorizing FY25 County Grant to Williamson Burnet County Opportunities for $10,000 in conjunction with Texas Department of Agricultural Texans, Feeding Texans, to provide home-delivered meals to homebound persons in the county who are elderly or have a disability, and certifying that the county has approved their accounting systems or, or fiscal agent. G would be an MOU and waiver of liability between Burnet County Sheriff's Office and the Texas Department of Public Safety regarding the use of the Burnet County Sheriff's Office Firearms Training Facility. Okay? And I do make sure on that MOU, because that property's actually owned by the county, not by the Sheriff's Office per se, so...
Um, if you want to, you can approve it with a change of language to the Burnet County Firearms Training Facility.
Okay. Because it was never platted separately or anything, but that, all that is owned by the county, not specifically the Sheriff's Office, so we might take a little look-see at that, so. Is there anything to add?
Yeah, and, and number A, we, we do not have the contract at this time, and this is a, um, this is the Bluebonnet Trails for the Mental Health Deputy that we have had in place before, um, but we are asking that the court will authorize us to accept the $80,000 from Bluebonnet Trail and the county jo, judge, uh, to sign the contract contingent on approval of the county auditor, county attorney, county judge, and the sheriff's office.
Okay. Did you have a comment?
I do, on, um, item D and E, uh, Claire Nibro, Burnet County taxpayer, voter, and interested person. So we're increasing that amount from $6,600 to $8,250, not to exceed that. Where is that money coming from? Am I allowed to ask that question as a taxpayer to know where that money is coming from?
I believe it's, it's a budgeted item, correct?
It's budgeted in the Human Resources Department under Employee Appreciation.
And is that taxpayer money?
Yes, ma'am.
Wow, that's a lot of money for a party. I will tell you, I was a public employee for Hennepin County in Minneapolis for 10 years, and we never used taxpayer money for a party. I am not begrudging the employees of Burnet County, a Christmas party, I am begrudging the, the use of taxpayer money for that. When I was a county employee, we did a potluck dinner, and we took donations for anything else. This is a lot of money that you're spending. How much on E? How much are we spending for the DJ services? Is that coming out of taxpayer money as well?
It's $750.
Yeah, I don't have the amount on here.
Well, I would really like to register my discontent with this money coming out of taxpayer funds. I think it's terribly, uh, tone-deaf in, in, in the light of how, how much inflation is, how much it costs nowadays to even put a decent meal on the table. For y'all to be spending this kind of money when we've spent $20,000 on the Baker Tilly thing, which was taxpayer money as well, and the Evergreen study of $38,000 where y'all got to justify giving yourselves a raise by doing a salary study. I, I really totally object to this money being spent. Thank you.
Okay, so that's the contracts and agreements we have before us. Is there any questions, comments, or motions? If there's no motions, there will be no action on these items.
I'd move for approval of the, uh, item 20 in its entirety.
Second.
We have a motion and second. All in favor, uh, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. 21, is discussion or action calling for bids, bid openings, requests, proposals, qualifications, and related openings. A would be a contract for 25-4090-01, uh, with Burnet County Annex Renovation Expansion with J Pool Construction. B would be award, a bid, uh, number 25-6100-02 with Burnet County Street Striping Projects. Four, street striping projects, that's not the name of the outfit. C would be award of bids, 256100-01, uh, for dents-grated hot-mix asphalt, and D would be authorization to go up for bids for cold mix, paving rock, bulk fuel, and oil, uh, changes. That oil changes, is that for all vehicles? Sheriff's Office?
What, what's happening is, we are going over the 50,000 mark, um, and so it would, we could, uh, put out a bid so that we have an oil change place on each end of the county, like one in Marble Falls and, uh, one in, uh, Burnet and possibly Kingsland. We could award it so that there's multiple.
We'd be limited to that.
It all depends on how you, uh, structure the bid. But yes, once you award a bid, you're, you're, uh, that's who you have to go with. We can, we can hold off on the oil, oil changes. We can do, we can do more of a...
I'd do my hat at Walmart. You're not gonna get it done any cheaper than that, and you're not gonna get them to bid on it.
If you wanna hold off on the oil change right now, because I think it's more of the tires that are pushing it over, it's the combination of the tires and the oil change that's pushing the vendors over, but...